Okay, it's 5:03. It's Tuesday, September the 6th, and we'll call this city council meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone to our meeting. If everyone please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Deb.
Harley.
Here.
Brad.
Here.
Rodney.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Jody.
Here.
Agenda item number four, entertain a motion to approve today's agenda. So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody. Yes.
Motion carried. Across the mayor's desk, I just want to thank our videographer, Riker Brindley, tonight, for helping us out there, and just hope that everyone was able to enjoy the long Labor Day weekend before the fall schedules certainly begin. I know school will be busy, activities, and we've got a few things planned here at City Hall as well, so it'll be a busy, busy fall. So the council have anything they would like to share? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to an update from the city administrator.
Just one announcement to share. The Wednesday night, December 7th, so tomorrow from 3 to 6, at the Kern Navy Lung, we'll be having our community visioning board design reveal. They have about 15 different boards that show some of the concepts in terms of park improvement, trail, transportation enhancements, aesthetics, and so we're really excited to see those. So we've seen some drafts, but even though the community, it'll be our first time seeing the final recommendations, and, you know, encourage folks to come out. They also eventually will be posted on our website as digital copies, but there's some really neat ideas on how we can improve how going on, and then once we kind of get this set of ideas, we certainly won't be able to do them all. It'll be what really, you know, strikes us, and, you know, where kind of the top projects or priorities we want to pursue. So it's been a real fun, interesting process, so I encourage people to come out. One of the things that will be kind of neat is we're going to have that one block breaker marked off with tape on how the hypothetical bike lane could look like on there, just as kind of a demonstration, so that is one option, so folks can see that as well.
Very good, thank you. Agenda item number seven, this is the citizens' opportunity to address the council with any item that's not on the agenda. Is there anyone you'd like to, would you like to come up and identify yourself again, please?
Okay, my name is Daniel Gutierrez, and I'm coming to inform you the food trailer that we have, it passed the inspection, you know, it passed the inspection, plus my wife got a certification, a certification of state food safety. So we passed the inspection, so now the only thing we're waiting, we got a place to park, and we have to pay rent. You know, every month we have to pay rent, plus I believe we have to put like a mil, mil for the electricity, and that's what causes more money too, and we want to know if, you know, if it's possible to get the year, what you call the permit, for the whole year, that we can, well, we're planning to start on between the 5th and the 10th of October. So I'm just coming to see if this is possible. If it's not possible right now, I can pay, you know, the first month, maybe in the future, you know. If you get a year deal, we can get it.
Is this something they come to the city and apply for a permit for?
Yeah. So, Deb, you just provide a count for the transient permits.
We, the transient permit right now is $20 a day or $200 a month, because how it's in our code.
Okay. Okay, and that's for, what do we charge for a food truck to be at the parks when they come?
Twenty dollars a day.
Twenty dollars a day for that right now? Okay.
So what we had discussed was just with the popularity of food trucks is over kind of the winter, around the season, drafting just a food truck specific ordinance and just dealing with it that way, because a transient permit, it, it works, but we're just, it doesn't fit for all the things that we're getting questions on. You know, so I guess my, my plan would be, you know, at that time, we look at every one of the rig structure and how we want to have that, you know, what options. You know, if council would like us to, you know, move forward on that quicker than later, we, you know, certainly can. It's just with everything we have going on right now, kind of, we're on the priority of wrapping up construction season, but it'd be tend to be to have something in place by next spring. You know, some of the considerations we're, you know, we're going to have to make is, yeah, maybe we do a month, six month, you know, annual permit. What's that fair amount, you know, researching other communities, what's that fair in terms of, you know, grip and order, you know, places of business that pay property taxes versus, you know, you know, food trucks that are even similar, they, you know, they don't, you know, their customers are using the streets to get there, but, you know, they're not paying property tax for those streets. I just, you know, generally how, how we set that up. So that would be our plan, to figure that out, you know, with the winter and kind of the normal needs to go into effect here this spring. Like I said, council would like us to address any issues with transient permit or that food truck ordering stuff sooner than later. Appreciate the direction.
Thank you. This gentleman was careful last time. I did get on a quick net, which is the city clerk email, and we're buying the city administrators, and what we're charging for transient permit is pretty much average of all communities, you know, $200 a day, $100 a month type of thing. But a lot of communities aren't looking at a specifically new ordinance, but right now, we're right in line for that request.
Okay. So we want to leave things as it is for now, for another month or two, and then revise things? Is this what you're maybe, I mean, for a short time, or what, what thoughts there?
Well, I think we want to continue to look at it like they said.
Yeah.
I think we need to, it maybe doesn't fit all situations, but I, I don't know how much quicker with things going on, they can get to it. It sounds like a reasonable timeline. I, I do think it needs to be, you know, continue forward and try to make sure we meet that timeline you're thinking.
Yeah, 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 just kind of from workload, maybe standpoint, probably looking at something that, you know, for the first of the year, just to try and get it, get it in the head of budget season, but it might, you know, lapse into that a little bit. But you get something in place, and once it burns up, it's, you know, we have a much, much simpler way to receive permits, issue permits, and then whatever fees, you know, council determines is appropriate. So I would say, I, to make sure that we have enough time, bouncing everything we have going on, and we can hopefully, you know, write for the new ordinance and write at once, you know, if we can kind of look at a late this fall, you know, help, you know, the reason of the grace, would be my suggestion.
So maybe-
Do you plan on being open all winter?
Yes.
You're, you're going to be open through the winter, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
And plus, and I pay like taxes on my house, actually two houses, and we go to pay taxes, you know, because every like $10 is already 70 cents from maybe $10. So we're going to be paying taxes, plus we have to pay the rent and the electricity. So all that, you know, is for the city, you know, plus good tacos with good salsa, you know. So just, if you were on mine, you guys can absorb. You cannot do nothing. I can pay the $200 for a month, but it's, I think it's a little too much, because we go to pay like $300 off rent just to be parking the property, plus the electricity, so that's, you know.
Yeah, it sounds like the $200, though, is kind of an average of other cities around us, from the research that they've done. But is, is it fair, maybe, to give us a couple of months to sort of look through things and?
Yeah, because one, because like, they say this like $200 a month. If you give me a part to pull, pull it over there, $200 a month is nice, you know, it's nice. But if I have to pay rent, plus the $200, plus the taxes, but the $10 of the, the $10 supposedly, it's got to be like $5 for me, plus the food and all the investment I have to pay, it's got to, you know.
Yeah.
Just to put it on mine, please.
Yeah.
Good. Point, point taken, and I certainly want to work with, you know, food trucks and encourage them, because they're, they are really popular. You know, like what, what we've done with the parks in the Lyman Dome, then there this last year, that was, we set it up, you know, organized it with the food truck, and it was only there when we were hosting city events, and it's because we don't have concessions. So we found this as a reasonable alternative to, we can't provide this amenity, so we're going to basically allow a private vendor to come in. Kind of to induce demand, we just charged them what it would be for the permit. We didn't have any sort of, you know, fee to have access to the parks. And that's, I think, is something on how we handle public property is what we'll need to address in that ordinance, because, you know, then it's the kind of principle of setting up, again, you know, it's basically taking public property and using exclusively for one, you know, private purpose, and just how, you know, how, how we make a consideration for that, you know, in these types of circumstances, you know, maybe on a Friday nights, it's worth having a couple parking spots with food trucks, you know, something like that. I think those are the type of things on how we handle public space that will need to be addressed as well.
So just some more research that we need to do and some understanding so we're fair to everyone, and so, yeah.
Well, I just want to say thank you for hearing me, and have a nice day.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn, thank you for this, and look forward to tasting it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I would agree to that question.
Okay, anyone else like to address the council on anything? Okay, we'll move then to agenda item number eight, which is the consent agenda, and that includes approving the minutes from our August 15th work session and regular city council meeting, approving a Class C native wine permit for the Trainwreck Winery, approving a Class E liquor license for Hy-Vee Wine and Spirits, and a Class E liquor license for One Stop Shop Number Three, approving the bills that are to be paid this cycle, and to approve Jacob's administrator's report. Move to approve.
One second.
We have a motion from Harley, second from Jody. Any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don. Yes.
Jody. Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number nine is a public hearing. It's 5:17. We'll open that public hearing. It's pertaining to a budget amendment.
This is the proposed budget amendment number one, CBFY 2022, 2023, C budget. Proposed amendment increase expenses by $153,490. This represents $128,409 in public safety, which is for the law enforcement community, the days on the position. The city received a grant of that same amount to cover those expenses in the previous fiscal year, and then $25,000 under community economic development, and that would be for what would be later this year, in the spring of '23, as we begin either removals or treatment of having this or vulnerable ash trees as part of our annual ash core mitigation plan. We have never received any other comments regarding this.
Okay. It's 5:18 then, and we will close this public hearing, and we'll move then to agenda item number 10 under new business, and this is the first reading of an ordinance pertaining to our sanitary sewer charges.
So as discussed in the work session, and over the last couple council meeting work sessions, the city's looking at a significant wastewater facility upgrade here in the coming years. We're looking at a construction start date in '25, completion, or excuse me, in '24, with completion in '25. The primary reason for the necessity of the upgrade is for the city to meet our current NPDES permit requirements. That's what regulates the effluent outflow from the sanitary sewer facility. Primarily is to add treatment processes to address total nitrogen and total phosphorus coming out of the plant. We completed a nutrient reduction strategy identifying options for how we might achieve that back in 2019. That identified technology we're proposing to use, which would be an oxidation ditch system. And then since then, the city's sewer engineer, WHPS, has been working on preliminary design for that project, and that report should be done here later this month. Based on that preliminary, or excuse me, that 2019, we've done a strategy report, and as we progress with preliminary design, the big thing we've been looking at is what our estimated cost to meet these new requirements are, and then looking at our today's revenues and what that difference is in order to be able to adequately fund the construction and not be in violation of our permit. Unfortunately, our current plant does not have the systems in place to treat phosphorus or to treat total nitrogen. Our plant also has a number of different aspects of it, which we defer maintenance on or defer replacement, knowing this project is coming to, to do a large project, and making sure whatever we do fits in with the ultimate of new technology. But more or less, we're going to have to build a new sewer plant next to our current sewer plant while maintaining an operating, operation of our current plant to switch over by October 2025 is when that would be switched over. To get to that, the cost is going to be significant. The 2019 report originally identified an estimated cost of 13, 15 million, and that was in 2019 dollars. Since then, we've obviously seen, you know, significant inflation. This is also the type of work that requires, you know, very particular skilled labor, as well as, you know, has a lot of parts and pieces that are very particular. And, you know, I exactly have several, several monthly time or something, just get off the shelf, you know, very custom. So those things certainly are contributing, you know, to our benefit either. We've put together some scenarios of what we're looking at for that bracket cost, which now we're probably going to have construction costs of, you know, 15 million north, and we'll have some increased operating costs with the new plant as well. But we pulled those together, and we're coming up with about a, more or less a, having to double our revenues from where they're at today. That revenue would need to be in place when we start servicing our bond payments in 20, fiscal year 2026, which would be following the year of construction. To get to that, we're proposing a series of increases, beginning with a mid-year increase that would take effect with, you know, if the first reading passes tonight, and the second and third at the, you know, following council meetings, will go into effect in the November 22 bill that goes out, and then a series of increases effective July 1, 2023, 2024, and 2025. As part of that analysis, we looked at, you know, the various types of fees that we have in terms of service fee, usage fee, and infrastructure fee, and how we balance those. And we, we need to dramatically increase our infrastructure and our sewer fee, as we looked at kind of our system as a whole, as well as comparables to other communities. We found that our small users are extremely low, whereas our usage rate is already kind of in competitive line. So that's where you, there's no way to, to double your revenues without there being any haul around. But with the requirements that, you know, the DNR has put on us to, to meet these standards, and the, you know, we're going on now a year, four or five years of engineering work, okay, how do we come up with a plan and a plant that's going to meet these, almost the most, most economical option? You know, what we identified with the oxidation ditch system was the, the most affordable of the alternatives we looked at, and that was prompting, you know, the necessity for these increases. So the ordinance would begin with that November bill, adjust the service fee and the usage fee, the infrastructure fee would stay the same, and then July 1, November year from '23, '24 to '25. That sets automatic increases that would buy FY 2026. We need to make those payments on our debt for this project. We'll be in a position of, we can fund operating costs and, you know, our debt service, based on the best information we have today. You know, certainly as we progress through the project, get more detailed cost estimates and projections, you know, we can adjust the ordinance. But I don't see this as going in a way that it's going to be, oh, we're, we don't need as much revenue as we thought. So this will, you know, by going on 2025, you know, that could change between now and then, but it, it does give our users or, you know, our households and our businesses, you know, notice that, you know, this is going to require them, and helps them project and plan out on, you know, we're having, obviously having to adjust to the requirements we're under, and then, you know, they can have some time to, to adjust and plan for how they're going to handle the fees that have been passed on in order to build this plant to comply with our permit.
Now, Jake, I know that construction's a few years off of this, and a large part of the construction is probably going to be earthwork and cement work, that sort of thing. But as you mentioned, the very specific pieces that are going to be needed, what concerns me is that all the cities our size are going to be needing those specific pieces at the same time. Are we going to have the final design in time that we can maybe get some of those things ordered? I mean, in the end, I'd rather be the city that anticipated and got ahead of the crowd instead of one of them who wished that they had.
You know, I'd say we'll have the final design done, but in terms of ordering those materials, that's something that would be the, the, you know, awarded general contractor. Or maybe sometimes you can ask, you know, if it would make sense for us to buy any of this, if it's something just, it's got to be this, nothing else, you know. But that would be something that, once the project's aborted, you know, the general, which, you know, as they're building their bids, then source those. But to that point, you know, my understanding is the DNR, kind of knowing the acute circumstances of supply chain with COVID, has been reasonable to work with in terms of if you get a piece that's a 14 month lead time, you know, what do you do, you know, so, you know, that's going to be something we'll just have to kind of work through as, as we go, and if we run into those, try to figure out a way to get them in advance or, you know, be upfront with the, the folks at the DNR, and they were trying their best, and usually if you show them that, or we'll, we'll be reasonable to work with. Yeah, that's when you say, no, we're not, we're not going to comply. That's when things get, get serious.
Yeah. Yep.
I'd make a motion to waive the first reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the first reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote, please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Can I just say something about this, please?
Sure.
Did I miss my chance?
No, no, come on up to the podium and-
I think you can stay here, please.
Oh, sure.
I think you can hear me. Or you will be able to by the time I'm done. I took the proposed waves for what would be 2026 and applied it to the bill I just got, and my bill will be more than doubled in 2026. And that's a $400 a year increase for me. And I, like a lot of other people in this town, live on a fixed income, not a debt, but you can add 4% on top of that for how knows, for who knows how long. Now, we've got inevitable tax increases, utility increases, and all other things that increases. I just think that there should be money out there from the government who likes to spend money on parks in California and green deals, that you should be able to get money to pay for this, rather than putting this all on our backs. That's all I have to say. I think it's, I think it's an incredibly huge burden to put on the people in this, in this time. You know, there's a lot of old people like me. We're not going to get Medicare increases or increases every year to help pay for this. Now, I don't use that much water. I feel for the people that use a lot more water than I do. But, I mean, their rates are going to be, I, I use 227 cubic feet. That's not a lot of water. But my service charge and my infrastructure fee are going to be the same as, as a person who uses 800 cubic feet. The only difference is going to be the amount in the water that I use. So I just, I don't see how that's fair to me at all for not using water. Okay, just, I, how much, how much is this, how, we got $317,000 yet from a rescue, from a rescue plan that isn't earmarked for any debt. Why can't we go after money from the government for projects such as this, that they have promised all these states that they could have? Has anybody looked? Have you looked?
So I, for one-
Yeah, go ahead, sure.
So just real quick, the service fee is a set fee. The infrastructure fee is based on the water meter size, which correlates with your capacity to use water, what we need at the plant to treat it, so that is adjusted for size. On that, you know, the simplest way to put it is, this is an unfunded mandate placed on the city. We've been told you have to meet these requirements, figure it out.
Or should you have funding for it?
So fortunately, most other cities have, are, or will eventually be going through a similar process as the DNR, you know, addresses these regulations. We certainly have and will keep an eye out for, for money to fund this. You know, there may be some funds through the state revolving loan fund that they are going to be forgiving as grants, you know, so there's that potential there, but that's an unknown. You know, the ARPA funding that hasn't been earmarked, that's something that, you know, the city could put towards this project. But when you're, you know, looking at a $15 million project, you can only kind of shave so much off the edges. There's, there's not a, a, a large, unless you're considered a disadvantaged community, which I've gone and would not qualify for, and that's based on a variety of factors, but mainly what your, your median household income is as a city, and, you know, where that relates to where your, your sewer bills are. Unless there's something out there, there's really not any federal grants out there. CDBG would be one that the city could apply for. We can get up to $600,000, but with that, you're federalized project, you have to pay the state wages, you have to do the environmental review, and when you place that on the general contractor on a $15 million project, you very, I mean, I used to do CDBG administration, and it's going to be very quickly, it's like, well, you're probably going to be paying close to the same amount in extra to get that grant money.
It just complicates things.
Yeah. So, you know, if, you know, we are on a number of different organizations and email lists and different programs. If there's something out there that pops up as a, as a grant or a road or some loan that we, we think we could take advantage of, we certainly would explore that. The unfortunate thing is, I guess, yeah, the simplest way, it's an unfunded mandate, and that funding has to, to come from the users, and it's-
I find it hard to believe that you can't find money from the governments on there. They've got money for everything.
As far as their, their structure funding, because they've put out, I stepped through many of those loaners, and it's always disadvantaged, you know, disadvantaged- through many of those loaners, and it's always disadvantaged, you know, disadvantaged communities, disadvantaged communities, and unfortunately.
Well, this right here, we disadvantage.
Currently, we do not qualify to apply for any of those grants.
Karen, I share your frustrations with this project. It seems ridiculous that we're being forced to do this for the minimal gain that we'll, that we'll have in phosphorus and nitrogen numbers. I know that we've all done a lot of, a lot of discussion on this, trying to figure out any ways around this, and unfortunately, it's being forced on us as, as sort of the disadvantaged community. I, I think by, we tried looking into that, and I think this sewer bill would have to be over ninety bucks a month for, for an average citizen, for, for us to qualify for their numbers. And it's, it's very frustrating. I, I know I share your frustration, and we, we have been looking into all the options that we came up because this is a huge project and it's a huge burden on, on everyone. It's going to be the employers, it's going to be the citizens, it's everyone. And, and it's just really unfortunate that we have to do this for what, what I feel is the minimal benefit or the minimal reduction in something that's going to be seen in the Gulf of Mexico that it, it's going to be almost unbearable, unbearable from what I can tell. So it's, it's really not something that we can, that we have a lot of control over, that it's something that's being forced down on us and all these other communities around us, too.
Well, I, I understand that. I understand that. We can't have to understand that there are a lot of retired people that are not getting this kind of raise every year to deal with this. So our income is basically just going to keep dropping and dropping and dropping and dropping. And, and add to that deposit, everything else that's going on right now, it's, it's, it's insane. It's insane to do this. I appreciate your time and listening to your rant, but I just hope I ever not to marry anyone this Sunday.
Obviously, we certainly don't have enjoyed coming up with a plan to have fun for this, and I'm sure none of you enjoy having to sit and vote on this.
Hey.
Every time I see a, a program out there that might work for this, I'm emailing it to Kevin, who's, hey, can we qualify for this? Can we apply for this? And sometimes it's like, yeah, let's try, but the federal grants are so highly, highly competitive that you're like a million and one with the two different grant. But we're looking into things and trying.
Sure.
But moving forward, we have to look at it as we're going to have to fund this project without any grants. Current, if we get a grant, great, it's going to come down off the top of the cost of the project, but we can't guarantee we're going to get anything.
And yeah, in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, if our numbers come in and they're good, and yeah, we can certainly amend this ordinance again and say, hey, we're not going to meet this much and we're going to, you know, flatten it now. But we'd, we'd rather be in a position where we're planning for what, based on the best knowledge we have today, planning for that and then have good news as opposed to hoping that something happens that we aren't even sure what that is yet.
So this is all coming down from the EPA, correct?
So, yeah, the.
Yeah, we know, we're down to the end.
Yes, the EPA delegates the Clean Water Authority to the, the, most of the states that accepted it, but yeah, so the DNR, and then, I believe it was in twenty ten, yes, you're on the, the state did their Iowa Nutrient Reduction Strategy. And that basically identified how we're going to go about taking Iowa, reducing Iowa's share out of what's, you know, going into the Mississippi and down into the dead zone. The overwhelming majority of the nitrates are from non-point source, you know, grass. I certainly have a different philosophy than the state does on how they've gone about regulating this and that they have really looked at the cities and, and the, the other, you know, entities with permits and say, well, we can easily regulate them, so let's just go crazy. And then, you know, add, here's some voluntary programs and some money as well to encourage you to do the programs, when, yeah, we're going to be, I mean, us and other towns are going to be spending millions of dollars to make a fractional impact when you look around and where are the nitrates coming from? I, I think they've, they've been off on their focus, but that's the powers that be.
Well, those powers that be, I would like to say, we vote on them on both the state and federal level, but unfortunately, I think they find it much easier just to turn it over to agencies like the EPA and the DNR, the Iowa DNR, to just do this and with very little oversight. So I'm not sure unless you specifically talk to your legislators and encourage them to be more proactive in this. Yeah, I think it's something free running now with the EPA and the DNR.
There is a very powerful lobby down at the City House, and we're not having to name what they are during open meeting, that I think is, we've got a lot of call of the city is getting regulated for a lot of this and not today.
So, so just real quick, this is from the the Iowa Nutrient Reduction Strategy Report, just to bring it into record. So, both non-point source agricultural land and urban runoff and point source, such as wastewater treatment plant loads, play critical roles in Iowa's water quality. The nutrient reduction strategy estimates that upgrading treatment plants across the state will result in a statewide in four percent nitrogen and sixteen percent phosphorus reduction, while the non-point sources will need to result in statewide in forty-one percent nitrogen and twenty-nine percent phosphorus reduction. So they are, you know, regulating those two entities, just have different kind of views on the balance. You know, the questions being raised in other communities that I've worked with on, like, well, what if, what if we don't do this? Do we have to? And it's like, well, you could say no, and you're going to get sued. And it's, you know, the, the, these are requirements that have been in effect since the nineteen-seventies with the Clean Water Act. It's going to get upheld that, yep, this is reasonable with regulation and jurisdiction. And so then you're going to get put under your consent decree, you're going to be required to do it either way, and then you're going to have the DNR and the EPA over your shoulder and, you know, for several years to come to make sure that you're complying with that.
Yeah.
There's, there's not a, you know, let's see, disincorporate.
Yeah.
And I want to say, through all of our conversations about this trade structure, we have definitely kept that fixed income individual or family in mind doing this, that what's going to be the least impact on them. I mean, there's going to be an impact on everybody, but we try to keep a smaller impact on that fixed income level than the corporations and stuff. So it is a hard line that you're on, you say.
Yeah. Well, and we know that, you know, you guys, your city staff has certainly done everything you possibly can. We've worked with it for several months with you and, and, you know, there's all kinds of scenarios you guys have shown us, and so we know that you're doing the best that you can. And with federal regulations, what do you do, you know, so?
And enough that this, I mean, it doesn't change anything, but when you look at our current small user rates, we've had a very low rate for a very long time. That was nice while it lasted.
Right.
Unfortunately, that is no longer going to be an option.
Yeah, and people get used to that, and that's understandable and, you know, but, yeah.
Well, it's just the start of what we know we're going to see in this process and what we're going to hear in this process.
Yeah.
Again, we, we'll always be there to listen and try to, if we can adjust, we will, but I appreciate everybody's work and I, what Tyler said it best, I think we're all filled that same way.
Yeah.
But we still got to move forward at this point, so I'd move to approve the first reading.
Second.
We have a motion from Rodney, second from Don to approve this first reading. Is there any further discussion?
I would just say that, that me and I appreciate all your work as well, and I would just appreciate in the future that if anything does come up, that if there is any nitrogen or phosphorus credits or anything like that, that we can get out of this, that even though I know we put a lot of work and, and cost and, or money into this already, I still think it's worth looking at anything that may come up in the future as the city, these other cities, as the legislators may be getting pushed back. If there's anything that comes up, I think we need to keep looking at this. And if there's a way out of this, I know that our, our current plan needs a retro bid, we need an upgrade, but two to three million dollars is a lot better than eighteen million dollars. So I think anything that we can do to continue looking at this is a good thing.
Yeah, and on the, the credit trading, there has been more talk of that now, again, I think it's kind of been more on the commercial and ag side, but we, we have talked with WHKS, I'm like, well, there, any reason why a city couldn't buy credits and we can reduce what we need to, to plan for at the plant and reduce our costs and, you know, offset it by restoring lettings or something like that. So, yeah, we'll continue looking at those and then certainly welcome any examples or ideas that the county has and the public has, how, how do we, how do we best balance moving forward.
And as to Tyler, I was approached about letting us credit. It's something that a couple of our communities are going around this. I got ahold of Kevin, who's with WHKS. He said if we want to use some of our sponsored project dollars that we will get from the sewer plant upgrade for credits, that would be good, but it's not going to save us any money on the sewer plant. Our sewer plant is to a point, whether we have to reduce the nitrates and phosphorus or not, it's going to be about fifteen, sixteen million dollar retro on the plant because it's old. It's, it, you know, it's what, forty-something or gold from the beginning, and it's just worn out and needs to be replaced.
Yeah, I mean, you can talk those credits, we still have the capacity at the plant to treat.
So a, a, anytime a loaner comes up about funding for the government, I'm listening in and then I'm talking to Kevin to see if it would, if we qualify or if we apply us.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. Vote please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody. Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda, item number eleven, this is a resolution pertaining to the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three budget.
This is the same item on the budget amendment that we had the public hearing on earlier. This resolution approves budget amendment, as noticed, for a hundred fifty-three thousand four hundred nine dollars for additional expenses to public safety and community economic funds.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Don, second from Rodney. Any discussion? Hearing and roll call, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda, item number twelve, this is a resolution approving the annual street finance report.
Every year, we submit reports to the state showing where revenues came from and how we spent them on street projects. This is primarily prompted through the road use tax, which the city receives from the state to go towards street operations and maintenance. The page two of this report, I think, is kind of the most interesting, but it shows our expenses out of our road use tax. We spent eight hundred sixty-three thousand, it doesn't go, majority of that is spent on the wages and then materials, equipment, operating supplies, as well as the dump truck that was purchased this last year within the street department to kind of fund our operations. And then we have a few items that come out of the general, and then the other big ones are debt service on capital projects, and then the closed-out completed capital projects are reported as well. So it's just kind of a summary report to the state on where our money's coming, what they send us.
Motion to approve the annual street financial report.
Second.
We have a motion from Rodney, second from Tyler. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody. Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda, I'm number thirteen, this is a resolution pertaining to the CDBG housing program.
Sure. A lot of year ago, we were awarded a CDBG honor, occupied exterior housing, a recent grant, right around two hundred forty-five, forty-nine thousand dollars. We did tours of three of the homes this fall. The NICO, my bioconfidential research is ready to award a bid on one of the homes. We cannot do repairs, total number twenty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars, except for the lead mitigation can be added, chap, if it does. This home, a two-hundred-and-ninety East Kennedy, we did receive two bids on SPI services, a little bit of twenty-seven thousand dollars, and I thought, which are many when you include this bid. The other two homes, I believe, will probably be approving at the next council meeting. They were single bids, we only have one bid from the contractor on each home, so we had to get approval from the state to award those bids, since it was a single bid, not a competitive bid. But this one, if we want this tonight, the contractor can get started on the repairs on the home immediately.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Harley, second from Jody. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody. Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda, item number fourteen, this is a resolution concerning the sanitary sewer waiver policies.
So this had come up earlier this year, we discussed it earlier in the, in the one month here, about adopting a new sewer waiver policy for pools. This is kind of prompted in, before the COVID, when the pools closed, we did a lot of sewer waivers for the people that bought pools, just to kind of offset, we continue to get a lot of requests for those. So the direction we came to, we put together a policy for, for users to submit and then kind of the standards for how it would be approved, fulfilling residential swimming pool. So it would have to be submitted in advance. Residential pools only can't be connected to the sanitary sewer, so the theory is they would just get the credit for the equivalent usage fee, since it's not going in the sanitary sewer and it's not going to be treated. As part of the application, they would need to submit, you know, the dimensions involved in the pool, that'd be used to calculate the usage, subject to, you know, a verification or a spot inspection by city staff that, yep, they've got a pool and it is what, you know, it's the size of they said that it was. And then, and you would calculate what that usage would be and a credit could be issued. You could only apply for one credit that would count every year.
So you can only apply for one credit? Am I reading this right, that water leaks, watering a new lawn, indoor landscaping, and the filling of pools, are those one credit? Pick and choose which one?
So, so the, the form that was uploaded, that's a draft update of our current form. So right now, the policy that the city has in effect is a sewer waiver policy for establishing a new yard and for a water leak. So this would be the, the third waiver policy. So this would be independent of those.
But as far as filling the pool, you could get one waiver per year. But if you're watering a yard, you could also apply for.
Yeah.
Okay.
A new yard, I should say, you can also apply for that also.
Okay. Thank you.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second. We have a motion from Don, second from Rodney. Any other discussion? Hearing and vote please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody. Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda, item number fifteen, approves the pay application for the library renovation project.
This approves the application number thirteen in the amount of seventy-six thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-eight cents. This is releasing the retaining on the interior portion, which has been completed. So it's for work already earned that, since we've been in there occupying it, and it's the architect that's going to then re-release that retaining. And then with the exterior improvements that are now underway, the labor and materials retained for that will start to reaccumulate, and then once we fix up with the project, we'll release that as the final retaining.
So work is underway on that now and going to be done this year?
It started on August twenty-second. The timeline that they shared shows it being finished in February with some of the final, the kind of window installation. It's really, I think, just going to depend on how many people are keen to be able to get outside on, on a given day, but the goal is to get it wrapped up this calendar year shortly after the calendar year. So far, we haven't heard of any supply chain issues, and that was a costly way for a lot of it. It's hard to even know if anything else is either here or on track to be here on time.
Okay, move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, second from Brad. Any other discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda, item number 16, this is appointments to the cemetery board of trustees. The terms of John Hank and David Van Gorkum have expired. Do we...
Yeah, I spoke with John. John would like to stay on the, the cemetery board trustees and would, would run for another term.
Okay.
I guess I'd recommend that we approve John.
Okay. Anyone invested with David?
I did talk to David, and he said he would continue his.
Okay. The both of them. Okay. So would someone like to make a motion then for, vote, we'll do them both together?
Yeah. Sure. I'd make a motion, we approve John Hank and David Van Gorkum to the cemetery board of trustees.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion from Rodney, second from Jody. Any discussion? Hearing and vote please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, John and David both, for your willingness to serve again, and thank you for checking with them and asking them, so. Agenda, item number 17, this is the second notification in terms expiring on the retail revolving loan fund committee, Betty Kunkel and Teresa Kellenberger, their terms expire September the 16th, and this is a mayoral appointment, and this is just the second notification there. And agenda, item number 18, is a notice of resignation and future appointment to the Parks and Rec Commission. Zoe Dow has resigned from the commission. She'll be moving outside of the city limits, so therefore she's ineligible to continue to serve. Zoe's term is a full six-year term, and this is a council appointment. Her term does expire the end of the year of 2025. So we want to keep that in mind and be checking around, see if someone would like to fill Zoe's term down on the Parks and Rec Commission. So with that, that brings us to the end of our published agenda. It's 5:56, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Let's move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you very much. The meeting's adjourned.